Good morning. We will call this Douglas County Board of Commissioners work session to order. It is Wednesday, January twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, and the time now is ten fourteen, and we apologize for our technical difficulties. First of all, County Clerk, would you please call roll for the record?
Yes, ma'am. And before I do that, I would ask anyone who is not, anyone who is not unmuted, please mute your mics at this point. We get a lot of feedback and echoing when, when you're not muted. So if you could do that for us, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay, so we'll start with a roll call. Commissioner District One, Henry Mitchell.
Present.
Commissioner District Two, Whitney Kinner Jones.
Present.
Commissioner District Three, Martin Raxton.
Present.
Commissioner District Four, Vice Chair Mark Alcaraz.
Present.
Chairman, Dr. Ramona Jackson Jones. I believe you're muted, Chairman.
Thank you, Clerk. Did we have anyone sign up for public comment today?
We did have one individual sign up, but after I call that individual, I would like to open the floor to any others that may want to speak. Ms. Sharon Bactel, are you on the line?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Before you start, I'll just remind everyone that you'll have three minutes to address the board. Once your three minutes are up, we'll ask you to wrap up your comments. And if you could just restate your name and your subject matter before you begin.
Okay.
Ms. Bactel.
Sharon Bactel, six three three one, South Skyline Drive. And thank you, Lisa, for signing me up to speak, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I would like to talk about the Election Department leases. I spent last year learning about the elections, which was a good year to learn since we had so many. Last January, I went to the opening of the machines, which is done at the annex. I was surprised at how small the building is. It is too small for the needed activities of the Election Department. As a poll watcher, I should be able to see everything. They opened ten machines at a time, and I could only observe four because there was so much equipment in the room blocking my view. The building did not seem secure with the glass front window, and I saw only one security camera. Millions of dollars of equipment is stored in this building, including voting machines, tabulators, printers, and batteries. It is imperative to keep this equipment safe and secure in order to preserve the integrity of our elections. Also, an election worker had to drive a passenger bus back and forth from the annex to the courthouse, which is an inconvenience and a waste of gas. The early voting for the special election in February was only available at the courthouse. There was a very low voter turnout for this election because there is no place for voters to park at the courthouse and even handicap park in his fall most of the time. Early voting is needed for the seniors and the handicapped. To vote at the courthouse, you have to go through security, which is a turnoff to some voters. We should be doing everything we can to encourage voting, not discourage. I also observed the opening of the mail-in ballots for the primary and general elections. We watched this livestreamed to a screen in the hallway outside the election office at the courthouse. The machine for opening the ballots is in a very small room at the annex. As poll watchers, we should be able to see every procedure, especially the sealing and unsealing of the ballot boxes. We could only see a portion of the procedure. It is hard for multiple people to see the ballots being scanned through a window at the office. In October, a Saturday early voting day was disturbed by another event at the courthouse, which again limited parking. I'm surprised that planning and zoning, transportation, and the corner all are getting buildings before the Election Department, which is renting space. The annex has limited security and space and is a waste of our tax dollars. Voting is one of the most important duties of the citizens and should be a priority to the B O C. It's time for Douglas County to have an election building that is all-inclusive in one place. To close, I'd like to say thank you to Malcolm, Mr. Phil, Tisha, Mr. Kidd, and all the other election employees for answering all of my hundreds of questions and helping me to learn about the voting process and for all of their hard work last year, too. Also, a shout out and big thank you to the poll workers at the old courthouse. They were awesome. And thank you again for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Bactel. I'll open the floor. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this morning? Being ma'am, I turn it back over to you, Chairman.
Thank you so much, County Clerk, and again, thank you so much, Ms. Bactel, for coming in and expressing your concerns, and certainly this matter will be taken under advisement. So thank you so much. Board of Commissioners, we're going to move to, we have a request to add to the agenda, a letter of support from A T and T's application for funding for the National Telecommunications and Information Administration's BEAT program, which is the N T I A program as well. And the BEAT program is a broadband program here, and certainly we'll have some more discussion. But at this time, do we have a motion to approve and amend the agenda with this added item? Do we motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second on the floor. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by raising your right hand, so I can see it. I see three, including myself.
Order.
Okay. And you know what I'll do? Just go around the, so I don't see. So if you approve when I call your name, please respond accordingly. District One Commissioner, Henry Mitchell the Third. Do you approve to allow us to add this item to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. District Two Commissioner, Kenny Jones, Commissioner Kenny Jones, do you approve? Okay. District Three Commissioner, Raxton, Martin Raxton.
I approve.
District Four Commissioner and Vice Chair, Alcaraz.
Yes.
Okay. And Ramona Jackson Jones Chair, approved. So we have a five oh unanimous vote, and motion carries. And that's what I'll do, Board. I forgot. It's been a while since we've been virtually, so I will have to ask you individually if you could respond. All right. Time limits, Board of Commissioners, we have three minutes to make remarks and two minutes to make rebuttals. So please just be mindful of that. And also tomorrow, we have a, well, yeah, we will. We have the Youth Commission swearing in during tomorrow's meeting, and we'll talk about our logistics for the tomorrow's meeting as we go forward. I will certainly have our Chief of Staff to discuss that with us. And our, well, first of all, our County Administrator. Approval of the minutes, Board of Commissioners. Next on our agenda is the minute meetings. Commissioners, please review those minutes before tomorrow's meeting and be prepared to approve or deny accordingly. All right. With that being said, we will begin our agenda items. Clerk, please begin with the first item.
Yes, ma'am. We have under Public Hearings, which the public hearings will be tomorrow, will have a House Bill five eighty-one, Homestead Exemption Opt-Out. And Tiffany Stewart Stanley will present a brief presentation tomorrow before the public hearing. And number five, we have a public hearing for a request for a certificate of compliance with the Metropolitan River Protection Act that has been filed by the Douglasville Douglas County Water and Sewer Authority for the modification of existing Dog River Main and East Dam and construction of a new spillway to provide a reliable water supply for Douglas County through two thousand and sixty-five. Allison Duncan will be presenting that tomorrow, but I'm not sure if she has any briefing this morning. Allison, do you need to brief this morning?
Hey, good morning, everybody. I'm certainly prepared to give you an update, but we feel this is a pretty straightforward application. This has just been reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission, and they do agree that this is a equivalent consistency with the Metropolitan River Protection Act. So we are recommending approval of the Certificate of Compliance for the upgrades to the Dog River Reservoir and Dam. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Board? Okay. Thank you so much, Manager.
Okay. We will move on to Grants. Number six is approval of a letter of support for the South Metro Riverlands Greenway two thousand and twenty-five Raise Grant Application to be submitted by the Trust for Public Land through the Atlanta Regional Commission and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Allison Duncan?
Okay. Good morning again. This is a letter of support from Douglas County for the two thousand and twenty-five application for the Raise Grant that's being submitted by the Trust for Public Land. As a reminder, we have provided letters of support for the two thousand and twenty-three application and two thousand and twenty-four application. So we are simply asking for approval to provide another letter of support for their two thousand and twenty-five application. Trust for Public Land has consistently received feedback from the federal government on our previous grant applications, and they have made revisions accordingly. The purpose of the grant is to provide assistance to further the design and planning of the Chattahoochee Riverlands Trail. This is running through multiple jurisdictions, including Douglas County and Douglasville. And there is no match requirement nor any obligation for any funding assistance by Douglas County, but Trust for Public Land has set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in potential match that they are willing to put towards the application. So we are seeking approval for the Chairman to sign this letter of support, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Thank you so much, Manager Duncan. Any questions, Board? Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Allison, thank you.
Sorry, Mary Child, I have my hand up. I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, I didn't see it. Commissioner, then you have the floor.
Okay, sorry. I'll just shout out next time.
Yes.
All right, Allison, good morning. I know you mentioned the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Is that how much we're asking for for the Raise Grant application, or is there a different dollar amount for this application for two thousand and twenty-five?
Yes, sir. There is a different dollar amount. I can get you that exact number from the Trust for Public Land. The two hundred and fifty thousand is what they are putting aside as a potential match to help nudge the project forward, but I will be certain to have that exact dollar amount for the grant. It is a multi-jurisdictional grant, so it applies to the City of Atlanta, Douglasville, Douglas County, South Fulton. So it's a bit larger, but let me double check the amount, and I will have that ready tomorrow. I can also email it around during the meeting today.
Okay, that'd be great. And if there's any more specific details, I know overall, at the high level, what the grant is being requested for, but if we have any more specifics, that'd be great as well.
Sure thing. Sure thing. I can send that around today and have that prepared for tomorrow evening as well.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Raxton. Any other remarks, Board, questions, or? Okay? If none, thank you so much, Manager Duncan. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Allison actually has the next one as well. Under Business Items, number seven, Certificate of Approval for the Reserve at Clock Tower Preliminary Platt.
All right. What we have before you now is a preliminary plat. So this project was approved several years ago for zoning. This is located on Fairburn Road behind the Time Plaza. This is a preliminary plat for a nine point six acre site. It's to include thirty-seven townhome units plus a half acre recreational amenity. This project is located on sewer. Previously, the conditions on the property required for this to be a condominium project due to the stacked townhome nature. They have since revised the plat, and so all of these will be sold as individually platted lots, fee simple homes, and we are recommending approval of this preliminary plat. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions, Board? I have one for you. What district is this in?
This is in Commission District Number Two.
Number Two. Okay. All right. Any questions, Board? All right. If none, we'll move on to the next one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Allison, thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you have.
Okay. Number eight is approval of a contract with Motorola for the Rave Mobile Safety Alert System in the amount of twenty-one thousand eight hundred dollars to be funded through the Emergency Management Budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. And James Queen is here to discuss that.
Good morning, Board. This is a contract with Rave. It's a Motorola company that provides mass notification. We currently use the On Solve Code Red system. We have had multiple issues out of that this past year during emergency situations, including the use that we have for when we have missing individuals and we send out notifications. There is a lag in their system that they've not been able to address, and we are wanting to change that over to this system, starting at, in two thousand and twenty-five. The contract with On Solve ends on May second. This contract would officially start on May second. Taking over that, we have it before the Board at this time because we have to have a certain amount of time that we notify On Solve that we are going to not renew our contract.
Any questions, Board?
Ma'am Chair, I have my hand up.
Commissioner Raxton, I see it now. Hand.
All right, thank you. All right. Good morning, Mr. McQueen.
Good morning.
Good morning. Question, does a three-year agreement provide any cost savings?
Um, it does in the long run. They're able to keep the price lower with the three-year agreement. Otherwise, it would go up to the twenty-one eight hun, this is, the first year is twenty-one eight hundred. With a three-year lowers to the twenty thousand each additional year rather than a twenty-one thousand each year individually. We still have the option to, to can't, to not renew the contract each year, just like we do with On Solve. We were able to keep their price lower because of the fact that we were going to agree to three years. But due to the issues that we're having with them, there, it's not feasible for us to continue our relationship.
Okay, understood. Then my next question is, is this considered as an addendum to the M C A
Uh, it is not. We're using the, the M C A just covers this as well. We're using that contract that we have to cover this project as well. They are just not, I guess it would be an addendum. It's not a new contract per se with the change in M C A. I don't know if that made any sense.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. All right. So you said it, it would be considered as an addendum, but we currently have, I'm sorry.
We have the, we have the M C A with Motorola currently.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Director Queen.
That's okay. We have an M C A with Motorola currently. This is a separate contract, but it's covered by the same M C A.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Director Queen. Appreciate that. Ma'am Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Any other questions, Board? No more questions. Director Queen, I have a question for you. You said, Mason, that this new initiative would start with the great, with the Rave Mobile, and you said the other would be discontinued. So are you uploading the information to Rave Mobile early to allow us to just not feel any interruption? What are, what are your plans?
The Rave is giving us the months of April and, or March and April at no additional cost to work with us on doing the transfer of all the data that we can, as well as putting out a basically media thing for trying to get people to sign up for the Rave system versus the On Solve, so that we will be able to transition as quickly and easily as possible.
Right. I think that was something good for the Board to hear, because I was thinking, I said, you know, when we turn the light switch off on May second and others, I said, but you still have to upload it, upload the data of the data. So you.
Right. We're going to work with Rave over March and April to get that data transferred.
Okay. Just wanted to give the Board some comfort. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, Board? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will move to number nine, which is approval of a service agreement with Graybar Electric Company to remove and replace light fixtures and lamps around the pool area in the amount of forty-two thousand six hundred and fourteen dollars to be funded through Boundary Waters Aquatic Center budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chad Griffin.
Good morning, Chairman. Board of Commissioners.
Good morning.
And County Administration. This is just a service agreement with Graybar to replace the light fixtures on the pool deck, in the lobby, and in the foyer area at the Boundary Waters Aquatic Center. And this is a state contract.
Any questions, Board? Or our Director?
Ma'am Chair.
Raxton, you have the poll.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Director Griffin. So just curious, are the fixtures currently broken or in a state of disrepair at this time?
Yes, sir. So the fixtures that were there, you can't just replace the lights. You have to replace the entire fixture. And those fixtures were replaced many years ago. It's just time for them to be replaced again. And we're just going to go ahead and move forward and replace the ones in the foyer as well and in the lobby, so we don't have the same issue on the pool deck.
Okay. Do we anticipate any cost savings with our bill once we get these fixtures replaced?
I could double check on that. They are L E D lights, so we should have some kind of savings there, but I can get that information and get it to you.
Okay, that'll, that'll be helpful. And then just curious as far as the timeframe, and once the contract, if it is approved and proceeds, what is Graybar's timeline? I didn't see that in the contract.
You town frame to install?
Correct.
Uh, it would take several days to install, and we would have to close sections of the pool just because they'll be using a scissor lift to replace these lights, and we'll work that out with, with them and with the citizens who use the pool.
Okay, so we're thinking a couple of days then, of inconvenience and for the install to be completed. Okay.
Yes.
Great. And I guess my last question, and I saw in the notice, and I just want to confirm if this project was approved and funded in two thousand and twenty-four, the two thousand and twenty-four budget, or is it out of two thousand and twenty-five budget?
Uh, yes, sir. This is coming from the two thousand and twenty-four budget of the Aquatic Center.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Ma'am Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Any other remarks, Board, or comments? Okay. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Okay. We'll move to number ten, Approval to amend the Fire Department's budget to accept an anonymous donation in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Chief Allen.
Uh, yes, good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Vice Chair. Good morning, Board of Commissioners, County Administration. Uh, once again, the Fire Department and Emergency Services would like, would like to thank the community for allowing us to serve you. Uh, this year, once again, we are receiving an anonymous donation, and we're just asking the Board to allow us to accept it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Chief. Board, any questions about this anonymous donation? And this is anonymous, so not too many questions. All right. With that being said, thank you so much, Chief. I know you have the next one. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me. Number eleven is Approval of Commercial Roofs for Less to Perform an Emergency Roof Reskin to Repair the Leaking Roof on Douglas County Fire Station Number Ten in the amount of sixty-three thousand six hundred dollars funded by the two thousand and twenty-two S P L O S T and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen?
Yes, so with the past few storms and weather incidents we've had, we've recognized that there is a major issue that we had in at one of our fire stations with roof. So we're just asking for this to get this repair done.
Any questions, Board? Regarding the roof? Okay. Madam Clerk, you have the next one, so Chief.
Yes, ma'am. Number twelve is Approval to Renew the Annual Agreement of Douglas County Fire and EMS Department's Medical Director, Dr. Raymond L. Fowler, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars funded by the Fire Department's two thousand and twenty-five budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Chief Allen?
And lastly, Dr. Fowler has been our medical director for a number of years now, and it's just time to renew his contract for the fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions, Board? Regarding the renewal?
No question.
Um, there you go. Raxton, you have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Chief Allen.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, just a quick question in regards to in the contract, the bottom, or one of the last section, it states that um, the medical director has ten days to notify of relinquishing the role. And I was just wondering, is ten days sufficient, or should we give some consideration to extending that ten-day period to maybe thirty days based on the need and viability of potentially the need for that, for the services of that role? So just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I believe that ten days is going to be sufficient. It's been pretty much standard practice with Dr. Fowler. Once again, he's been our medical director for a number of years, so I don't see any issue with that, with that length of time.
Okay, so the ten days.
Need everyone to. Mute the mics, please, please. All right, you all have the floor again.
Okay, all right. All right. Well, Chief Allen, if you don't feel that, that's an issue. Again, I just saw that. I just wanted to bring that up for consideration.
Thank you.
All right, Ma'am Chair, I yield the floor back to you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Raxton. All right. Madam Clerk, and thank you so much, Chief Allen.
Thank you. We'll move to number thirteen, Approval for the Board of Elections and Voter Registration to Enter into a Lease Agreement for Annexed Office Space in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars per month to be funded by the Board of Elections Budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Milton Kidd, are you here?
Yes, ma'am, I am. First off, I would like to thank you, Madam Chair, and the rest of the Commission and the County Administration for consideration of this item. During the two thousand and twenty election season, the State of Georgia updated all elections equipment and the roles and responsibilities of the Elections Office. It was at this time that a temporary measure that the Board of Elections secured the building in question as a temporary measure to house additional voting equipment and staff that came with the change in voting system. This annex location was purchased with grant, well, was secured through grant funds for four years at that timeframe to give the county time to formulate a long-term plan of what it was going to do with the Elections Office. With the beginning of this year, we came to the end of that four-year period, so now that annex location comes back onto the department's budget. This particular item was noted during the two thousand and twenty-five budgeting cycle that these actions would be taking place, and a budgetary improvement request was made at that time. Uh, because of this item has to happen with housing elections equipment, I did submit a request to finance this year to move funds from one line item to cover the rental payment for this location for the current year. I would continue to ask the Board of Commissioners to be mindful of the fact that next year's election season is an open-seat gubernatorial seas, uh, season with major federal, state, and county contests. This will be a large election year coming up. The Elections Office has already outgrown the usefulness of this space in question, and thus, we are once again formally requesting that the Board consider the possibility of relocating the Complete Elections Department into a singular space prior to the two thousand and twenty-six election season. These actions will aid in the overall effectiveness of the Board of Elections to deliver free and fair elections to the citizens of Douglas County. During the last major election, the Elections Office did conduct an election with more than seventy-two thousand Douglas County citizens casting a ballot. Thank you for your consideration on this matter. I'm here to answer all questions you may have at this time.
Thank you so much, Director Kidd. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for our Director? Okay. No, no questions, it appears. Okay. Madam Clerk, I yield the floor back to you. We have. Here for the next item as well.
Yes, ma'am. Number fourteen is Approval for the Board of Elections and Voter Registration to Enter into a Lease Agreement for Warehouse Storage Space in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-four cents per month to be funded through the Board of Elections Budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Milton Kidd?
Once again, this is a second storage space because um, the first storage space is actually inadequate to house all of our voting equip. a second storage space because the first storage space is actually inadequate to house all of our voting equipment and this particular lease item is actually cheaper than storage units or things like that. So we are once again securing an additional space with the request that this Board consider relocating the entirety of the Elections Department.
Okay. Thank you so much, Director Kidd. Any questions, Board? No questions. Thank you all. Oh, thank you.
Okay, we will move, I'm sorry, we will move to number 15. Approval to submit an encroachment, an encroachment permit, maintenance and mowing agreement and a letter of support for Highway 166 at Chapel Hill Road Roundabout Project to Georgia Department of Transportation with no impact to the budget and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Director, Director Rana?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and County Administration. The subject project is a proposed single lane roundabout at the intersection of Straightout 166 and Chapel Hill. The intersection sees about 15,000 riders on a daily basis with about 50 crashes in the past five years. The current levels of service of the intersection is about, is almost at E or F, which is failing. The proposed roundabout proposes significant improvements in levels of service and reduced risk for crashes. The project is in final stages of design and we're proactively working with Georgia Department of Transportation on the required permitting. The items, the three requested items mentioned in this agenda item are the required documents for successful completion of the permitting requirement. And then at that point, we can, we can expect GDOT's final approval on this project. For those reasons, we're recommending this for your approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Managing Director Rana. Board of Commissioners, any questions for our Managing Director? Okay. I have one question for you, Managing Director. How soon do you project this project? How soon will it start? Any ideas?
Yes, Madam Chair, as we've, once we get the permit, the next phase is right-of-way acquisition. That would pretty much define the timeline. High level where we stand today, we're expecting Q2 of '26 to begin construction and the duration would be about six months once it starts.
Okay, Q2 of '26. Okay, that helps Board gain a better understanding. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I yield the floor back to you.
Yes, ma'am. Number 16 is approval to accept a deductive change order from Summit Construction and Development LLC in the amount of $626,919.59 in connection with the Spine Road project and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solomon Rana?
Spine Road, also known as Foxfield Parkway, is about half a mile of roadway off of Fairburn, built to facilitate substantial economic development underway in the Lee Road, Fairburn quadrant of the county. As of October 24, we have completed the project on schedule and we're happy to report that we have about half a million dollars in savings just a project. So we're presenting this for your approval. Just a point of clarity, the number 600 and almost $627,000 includes deduction of a signal. The cost of the signal is about $145,000, which is not exactly savings, but an expense that will be needed down the road. The only reason we need to deduct this right now is because GDOT denied our permit and this will be approved at a later time. We're expecting this to come back in about six to nine months. And at that time, we'll get the permit approved and this cost of $145,000 will facilitate that signal, at the signal. Regardless, we're very happy with the progress and the work that our team put in and very happy with the savings that we have to present before you. With that, I recommend this for your approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Managing Director. Board of Commissioners, we have any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay.
You, Director Rana. I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you. Number 17, approval to accept supplemental agreement number one with Low Engineering LLC in the amount of $1,869,731.83 in connection with design services for project number 13563 Lee Road and South Sweetwater Road Widening Project to be funded by 2016 SPOLOST funds and 80% to be reimbursed by Georgia Department of Transportation and authorize the Chairman to sign all related documents pending final legal review. Solomon Rana?
Thank you. Board, for your reference, there was a financial summary of the project attached with this agenda item. But to summarize, in '22, we started the design phase of Lee Road Phase One, which is roadway widening from Vulcan Drive all the way to US 78, converting the existing two-lane roadway segment into four to three lanes with pedestrian accommodations and various other safety improvements along the corridor. In '22, we started the project with only about $453,000 in federal funding with a limited scope of design, which was projected to complete 40% of the work required. Over time and up until today, we've had various iterations of additional or supplemental federal funding. Today, where we stand, we have sufficient federal funds to support the remaining 60% of the work. For those reasons, we have this supplemental agreement that covers the remaining tasks on the design project and most of this will be reimbursable through the federal grants that we have secured. For those reasons, we recommend this for your approval and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board of Commissioners, we have any questions for our Managing Director? All right, Managing Director, I have one for you on this Lee Road project. I know it's still in progress. Do you, just do you have an idea for when we will be, this project will be completed? Is it late September of this year? Just could you?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the current schedule is we have a proposed conceptual public open house at the end of this month. That pretty much marks a major milestone in the concept phase. We're projecting the design phase to be finished by next year, officially transitioning us into right-of-way acquisition. Depending on how those acquisitions go, we are projecting to start construction by 2028.
Yeah, for this particular one, yes. Okay. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, I yield the floor back to you. On these committee assignments, you may have to read them for me because I don't see.
Yes, ma'am.
Major change for the Board, but just if they could hear, just a few things shifted.
I will. We'll start with the 2025 committee assignments. We need to mute mics.
Your mic? Please, thank you. Lisa, you have the floor.
Thank you. We have the benefits and pension committees. We have those listed as one, but they would meet separately, so I just wanted to clarify that on behalf of Commissioner Raxton. He will be assigned as the Chair of that committee, those committees, with the Vice Chair being Chairman Jones. Community Services Committee and residential development, the Chair of that committee will be Commissioner Mitchell and the Vice Chair would be Commissioner Kenner Jones. The Finance Committee/Tax Abatement, the Chair would be Chairman Jones and the Vice Chair would be Commissioner Raxton. Public Safety Committee, the Chair would be Commissioner Alcaraz and the Vice Chair would be Commissioner Mitchell. Safety Board, the Chair is Commissioner, Chairman Jones, I'm sorry, Chairman Jones, and there is no Vice Chair. Transportation Committee, the Chair would be Commissioner Kenner Jones and the Vice Chair would be Commissioner Alcaraz.
Okay, so those are the committees. Any questions, Board? Okay. No questions. All right, Madam Clerk, we have.
Yes, ma'am. There's one agenda item remaining. This is an update from Cobb Douglas Public Health with Lisa Crossman. And she does have a presentation and I'm going to attempt to share my screen, so if y'all could just bear with me just one moment while Lisa gets ready as well.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Commissioners and Staff and Residents. Thank you for inviting us for an update. I also have Rachel Franklin with us. She is our Director of Epidemiology and Infectious Disease and so we're going to be sharing the presentation and available for questions.
One second.
Thank you.
While you're linking that up, just in the interest of time, Lisa, I'll go ahead and get started because some of it is just a verbal update and we can get started. So the first thing that Chairwoman Jackson Jones asked me to update was the status of our Public Health Center expansion on Selman Drive. You all will recall that the Commission awarded Public Health $4 million for that expansion. Thank you so much for that. Was there a comment? Also, you will, may remember that the Board of Health allocated an additional $1 million for the project. So we were excited about that. That's coming out of our reserves. We've been working with our, the county staff and the land evaluation to make sure it was appropriate for an expansion and that's been approved and completed. We also completed the bridging document request for proposal with an architectural firm. And so McMillan, Pasden, and Smith Firm has been selected to do our bridging documents. I think that's the same firm that's been, that's working on the library on that same campus. And so we are currently in the process of working with county architectural and public health staff to complete the bridging documents. Once that's done, we'll move directly into an RFP for Architectural and Construction Services. So that project is moving along very nicely. Also, I think that you wanted an update about the septic maintenance ARPA grant. And so I'll remind everyone that that was designed for low-income Douglas primary homeowners for routine septic tank pumping service for a non-failing septic system. So that will be a grant up to $500 to be able to cover routine septic tank pumping to encourage residents to maintain their septic tanks appropriately to reduce the risk of impact on their neighbors and their home and the environment. Thank you, Lisa. If you'll go down to the slide number three, that would be great.
I'm so sorry. Okay.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you. And so the grant also provides for primary homeowners, not rental properties, but primary homeowners for their home for the repair of a failing septic system or connecting a failing septic system to the public sewer if that's available. The grant would allow the actual cost up to $15,000. We found that as we were working through this grant, the grant details, that there's an awful lot of variety in the quality and the cost efficiency of septic repair. And so we wanted to make sure that we were helping to represent our residents appropriately. So we'll be releasing later this week a request for proposals for septic repair companies to participate in the project. You'll see that go live on our website later this week. And then once those companies are selected, we'll be releasing the application for residents to apply on our website and we expect that to happen by March 1st. Just recall, from a low-income standpoint, that's, that's going to be applying for 185% of the federal poverty level. That's based on family size and income. For example, a family of four in 2025, that 185% of poverty level is a 50, just over 57,000 for household income. Then I want to turn it over to Rachel Franklin. Rachel, as I said, is our Director of Epidemiology and Infectious Disease and she's going to give you an update on that, on the bird flu and on our other respiratory status. Rachel, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, everybody. So I want to talk to you for just a minute about bird flu. You probably saw in the news a few days ago that in Georgia, we did have our first confirmed. It's called highly pathogenic avian influenza or HPIAs you see on the slide. First confirmed case in a commercial poultry operation. It occurred over near the South Carolina border, Elbert County. That was on the news over the weekend. So of course, Georgia Department of Agriculture takes the lead on any bird flu that is affecting wildlife, whether it's poultry or cattle, all of that is covered by them. On the public health side, of course, we are in charge of the human side of that. The risk of avian flu to humans is still very low. But whenever there are cases, we do the monitoring of any humans who might have been exposed to those sick animals. So we monitor them for 10 days. We also coordinate with our Georgia Public Health Laboratory for any very quick testing of those who might show any signs or symptoms during that incubation period after exposure. So I just wanted to bring that up. It is a very serious disease. Of course, our number one concern is the fact this is our number one industry in Georgia. So we are very concerned on the animal side. And again, the Georgia Department of Ag takes the lead on that. So very little to note, human, to human transmission is a worry. It's really about those who are exposed to sick animals. A lot more information is on the Georgia Department of Public Health and the CDC websites regarding this avian flu. Next slide, please. But what is affecting us here in Georgia and locally, my own household, actually, I'm home with a sick kid today with the flu, is just regular flu. We are at our peak respiratory season, it seems like. We are at what's considered very high flu levels in Georgia as well as locally. You can see on the graph on this page, the red with the triangles, that's our current graph of where we are this season. And we show this to show compared to the past five seasons, what are we looking like? And as you can see, the trends are very similar to our previous flu seasons. Most often, flu does spike after the holidays. January is usually one of our worst months and that's exactly where we are trending right now with our flu. Unfortunately, in the state of Georgia, we have 14 confirmed deaths in the state that have been confirmed by Department of Public Health and all flu deaths and outbreaks are reportable to us in Georgia. And then we have our Sentinel providers that provide us with other surveillance data for flu. COVID thankfully continued lower activity, nice lower plateau. But we are seeing some signs of a slight increase post-holidays, so we are keeping a close eye on that. Next slide. But what I really wanted to focus on was just the prevention messaging. It's the same, whether it's flu, COVID, RSV, any other respiratory bug that still can affect us and make us run down for a few days. So several prevention steps, and this is just some good refreshers just this time of year. Number one is immunizations. It's not too late to get that vaccine. However, just remember that it takes about two weeks for it to actually kick in and give that protection for your body to build that immunity after getting that vaccine. So just kind of keep that in mind over the next couple of weeks if you haven't already gotten it. So practices, of course, that prevent spread, this is good for all of our infectious diseases, but especially this time of year. Proper hand washing, I cannot stress that enough. I'm always trying to stress that, especially to kids in the schools. Really washing those hands and if you can't get to a sink with soap, use that hand sanitizer. That's always a good little quick thing, especially if you're out in the grocery store and that kind of, you know, exposure to others. Cleaning those frequently touched surfaces because we touch our eyes, nose, and mouth way more than we realize after we touch those surfaces. And then finally, just, I know it's 10 degrees outside, so we don't want to open our windows right now, but otherwise having those, just opening, opening the windows, getting some fresh air, having those purifying indoor air filters, and then when the weather works with us gathering outdoors versus everybody being inside breathing that same air. When you are sick, really just trying to stay home at least till you're 24 hours fever-free without the use of fever-reducing medications and just your symptoms improving overall because remember you are still infectious up until the very end and even 24 hours afterwards. If you need to go to the doctor or out to get medicine or anything, put that mask on so that you're not spreading it. And then of course, you know, covering your cough and sneezes with a tissue and then wash your hands afterwards. Next slide. And of course, you might have also seen on the news, it is annually our norovirus season. That is our stomach bug. The, this bug is highest between January and March here in the U.S. And this year seems to be a much higher than normal activity level. Sometimes norovirus has some changes and this seems to be one of those years and we just have a lot of activity going on. and we just have a lot of activity going on. Haven't had a lot of outbreaks reported to us locally, thank goodness. But unfortunately, it is still early in that season. This one is really about spreading direct contact, person to person. Or if somebody handles, is making food, and they are sick and they haven't washed their hands, they can contaminate those foods and liquids. And again, it's about touching those contaminated surfaces and then putting those hands in your mouth. Unfortunately, with norovirus, even though thankfully it does go very quickly, you can still spread the virus for a few days after you feel better. So you really want to make sure that if you have to get back out in the community, just really good hand washing, so you're not making anybody else sick, especially if you have to prepare any foods. Next slide. And then finally, some prevention measures for norovirus. Again, it's all about that really good hand washing, using soap and water at least twenty seconds. Unfortunately, hand sanitizer is actually not very effective against this virus. So whenever we have outbreaks reported to us from facilities, we always remind them, let's not depend on hand sanitizer. Really, it's all about the hand washing. That's what's going to stop the spread. And then washing your fruits and vegetables, cooking the shellfish thoroughly, and just really disinfecting those surfaces. Even your laundry, your clothes, they can be, they can get the virus particles on them. So washing that in hot water. It only takes a few virus particles, like ten, to make somebody else sick. And we shed millions of them when we are ill with norovirus. So of course, drinking plenty of liquids, staying home if you can for two days after your symptoms end. And actually, if you're a food handler, that is required so that you're no longer infectious to others. And I think that's the end of my section. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions, Board? Regarding this presentation, certainly wanted to make sure that we not only keep ourselves abreast of viruses and illnesses that are out here right now, especially that are prevalent, and also just to have this information available to our citizens as we try to work our way through this winter season. Any question?
You can go to the last, slide nine, just as a summary. And then
I am so sorry about that, there's another slide.
Yeah, that's okay. Chairwoman, as always, you know, individuals can visit our website. We encourage you to go there, the CDC website or Georgia Public Health website. All of those have ongoing information about this issue.
Need everyone to mute their mics, please. You have the floor again, Lisa.
Yes, just open for questions. And then, Lisa, if you'll go to the next slide that gives our website, and folks can reference that. And we'll make these slides available to you all to post on your website or as a link with your meeting minutes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us today.
You are more than welcome. I appreciate you and Rachel coming in. Board, do you have any questions before they exit? Okay, thank you again, and we appreciate what you, the services you provide to our citizens here in Douglas County regarding public health, and this information is very beneficial.
Of course.
Wait, winter, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that is, any Commissioner comments today? Board, any comments before? Any comments? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm, yes.
Yes, this is Lauren Wiggins. Good morning. Did we already handle the added item for the AT&amp;T?
We did, we did not. We added it, but it did not get discussed.
We didn't discuss it, yeah. We sure did not. We added it, the Board approved for it to be added, but we did not discuss it. So thank you so much. So I believe Tiffany's family, you will be discussing this item, Board. And I, again, everybody, please mute your mics.
Thank you.
Somebody's laughing, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. We are coming before you today, asking for the Board's approval for a letter of support. AT&amp;T is submitting an application to the Georgia Technology Authority for funding that was received from the National Telecommunications and Information Administration B Program. This is a grant program to expand broadband across underserved and unserved areas. And Georgia received one point three billion dollars from the federal government, and the Georgia Technology Authority will be administering those funds to different organizations that would like to support and expand broadband. They have asked Douglas County for a letter of support, supporting their initiative, and we're just asking for the Board's approval for the chairman to be able to execute the letter of support so that Douglas County is in the area that they're asking to some of our underserved, underserved and non-served areas to be expanded. So we're just asking for the Board's approval for the letter. And I'll yield for any questions.
Any questions, Board? Okay. Sounds like no questions. Madam ACA, no questions. Okay, well, thank you so much for bringing attention, Attorney, County Attorney, that we had missed an item. Okay, well, with that being said, it will be on the agenda tomorrow, Board. This item will come before you for approval. All right, so. If everyone just mute their mics. Board of Commissioners, do you have any comments? Certainly, if you don't have any, I will approach our County Attorney regarding an executive session, if we need to go into executive session. Any remarks, Board?
Just one, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Mitchell, you have the floor.
Lisa, is that, I think the, is this on the consent agenda, speaking about the the readjustments now of the committee structures?
I would have planned to put it on the consent agenda unless anyone objects.
I object, but that's the, yeah. That's the only comment I've got.
Okay, I will place that under business.
Okay. All right, any other discussion, Board? All right, that being said, County Attorney, do we need to go into executive session?
Yes, we would, Chairwoman. And if you could just announce it for all four reasons to give us some leeway, thank you.
Let me make sure I have them all. Okay, Board, we have real estate. Give me all four, once again.
Yes, ma'am, real estate, litigation, personnel, cybersecurity.
Okay. Board of Commissioners, do we have a motion to go in executive session for real estate, litigation, personnel, and cybersecurity?
So moved.
Do we, we have a, do we have, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion, and the second one, I'll call your name, please, respond accordingly. District, or your districts, District One?
Sure, yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
I mean, yes, we have a five-year unanimous vote, and the motion carries. Okay?
Chairman, can I just give instruction?
Yes, you can.
You should have received a separate invite to the executive session. So if you go to your Outlook, or if you go to your email, you should have the invitation there, and you can just follow the link, and it would put us into another room. And once we get done with that, we will, we can just revert back to this current work session.
Okay, so in essence, you should just come out of this, go to our link.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Citizens of Douglas County, we will take a temporary calls, calls to allow the Board to engage in executive session. We will return momentarily, and certainly we will, we appreciate your patience. With that being said, Board, we, please, if you would just leave this and this actual link, and then go, click on your new link, and then we will start our executive session. Thank you. Board of Commissioners, and to the citizens of Douglas County, thank you for allowing us to engage in our executive session. Board of Commissioners, we need to come out of executive session. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion, Board? We have a motion in a second, when I call your name, please, respond accordingly. District One, or your district, District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
Chairman, yes, we have a five-year unanimous vote, and the motion carries to come out of executive session. Board of Commissioners, do you have any other discussions or remarks that you would like to make? Okay, if there's nothing else to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned. I do want to remind us, we do have a meeting tomorrow. And if our Chief of Staff could provide us guidance, tomorrow, the meeting is at six P.M., and it will be here, and if you could, please provide that information for us, Chief of Staff.
Well, Madam Chair, we previously advertised yesterday for the meeting to be virtual due to the possibility of inclement weather. I've spoken with the County Attorney, and in order to reverse that, we would have to do another advertisement stating that the meeting would now be in person. So I would need, I guess, the direction to move forward with that.
Okay. Board, certainly because the weather missed us, and that was a great divine move, and we appreciate the blessing that we received, I would like to move the meeting back to in person tomorrow. Do you have a problem with that? And certainly, that will allow the administrative team, or should I say administration, to get the information to the newspaper and all the other bodies that need to have this information to let them know that we've made some different arrangements and reversed our initial plans. Are there any objections before I do that? Okay.
Good with the virtual staying, but I mean, I'll listen to my colleagues.
I'm fine with virtual.
I agree with Commissioner Mitchell, Kenner Jones.
Yep, and I'm in agreement with him to stay in virtual.
Virtual, so that sounds like we're going to stay virtual. All right, well, certainly, we will return tomorrow virtually at six P.M. And certainly, this will be broadcast live, and the citizens will have the ability to be available as well. So that's, we, our meeting will, tomorrow at six P.M., virtually. If there's nothing else to come before this body, Board of Commissioners, and thank you, citizens of Douglas County, and Board of Commissioners, if there's nothing else to come before this body, this meeting is adjourned. This work session is adjourned. Thank you.